...... is now in session. Please write over the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the life of the United States of America and to the brotherhood of which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Heavenly Father, we come before you with all praise and glory, Lord. We thank you for this magnificent day that you have given that we've never seen before. We, Lord, we ask that you be in the presence of this meeting and guide us and direct us. We ask for all these blessings in your Son, Jesus' name, we pray. Amen. Can we have a moment of silence for Linda Freeman, Gloria Jones, and our secretary's father passed away, and as well as Mayor Pastrick of the City of East Chicago? A moment of silence, please. Thank you.
Clerk Golick, roll call votes, please.
Markovich.
Here.
Spitali.
Here.
Calwinski.
Here.
Torres.
Here.
Higgs.
Here.
Emerson.
Here.
Warpo.
Here.
Rakels.
Here.
Vanez.
Here. Let the record reflect nine present, zero absent. Moving on to reading of the minutes.
Madam President.
Councilman Spitali.
I make a motion to accept the minutes from October 24, 2016.
Second.
Motion by Councilman Spitali, second by Councilman Emerson, to accept the minutes of October 24, 2016. Any discussion? Any discussion? Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Minutes are accepted. Moving on to approval of claims.
Councilman Vanez.
Councilman Markovich.
Move for approval of claims, October 19, 2016 through November 9, 2016, for meeting November 14, 2016. Beginning with claims dated 10/19/16 and ending with claims dated 11/9/16, claims number 6638 through claim number 7030, for a total of $17,791,314.92. I so move.
Second.
Motion by Councilman Markovich, second by Councilman Higgs, for acceptance of the claims from October 19 through November 9, 2016. Any discussion? Any discussion? Any discussion? Clerk Golick, roll call votes, please.
Markovich.
Yes.
Spitali.
Yes.
Calwinski.
Yes.
Torres.
Yes.
Higgs.
Yes.
Emerson.
Yes.
Warpo.
Yes.
Rakels.
Yes.
Vanez.
Yes. Claims pass, nine in favor, zero opposed. Moving on to public hearings, there are none. Communications.
Madam President.
Councilman Higgs.
I received a correspondence from the mayor that says, "A press release. In celebration of the 80th year anniversary of the Hammond Civic Center in 2017, Mayor Thomas McDermott Jr. has authorized renovation of the Icon Building. Remodel work has already began on the two concession stands inside the arena. Other improvements coming soon to the building. And 5825 Soul Avenue includes the gymnasium, bleachers, new scoreboards, gym floor refinishing, new basketball and volleyball court systems, electrical upgrades, hallway painting, and new portable stage. These improvements are necessary to keep the historic Civic Center vibrant as a community gathering extension. Improvements such as these will continue to give the facility flexibility to hold exciting events in Hammond, such as the 219 Day, basketball tournaments, professional wrestling, Cinco de Mayo, graduation concerts, and many others. These new renovations to the historic building will only enhance the building and make it more functional to the up-to-date, said Mayor Thomas McDermott. These improvements will allow us to handle larger crowds in the Civic Center, more comfortable, and with smaller lines for the concession stands." And that was the press release dated November 10, 2016.
Thank you. Any other communications?
Madam Chairman.
Councilman Torres.
Last council meeting, we received a letter from the mayor, basically a personal attack on myself, and I need to respond to it. I'm sure that all of you got a copy of the slanderous letter that the Honorable Mayor sent to us. You know, usually I would overlook such correspondence as a typical political rhetoric, but to this letter, I have to reach my hand. I am 68 years old, and never in my life have I recalled ever being called a liar. The Honorable Mayor has called me a liar in his letter. He suggested that either I go around talking to imaginary people, or that I simply make things up. Why in the world would I make something like that? Some city workers feel that they have no saving working conditions or salaries. If the Honorable Mayor thinks that there is nothing but joy in the city's workforce, then he's the one imagining things. You know, page two of this letter, he says that I assimilated that wink, retaliate or run. I guess he was referring to his emigration. This city do fear intimidation. I did not assimilate anything. I simply repeated what was told to me. And Honorable Mayor, I got something to say to you. You are nothing but a bully, intimidating, intimidated. You are an abuser on our government power. You are rude, demeaning. You like to belittle, and you just love insulting people. Your def- the fading letter proves it. I am merely the messenger, relayed what was told to me. If you are so latterly with me for having relayed the message, imagine what would happen to the workers that sent it. They would be fired, demoted, or transferred, or whatever miserable thing you could do to them. No wonder they would rather keep quiet and say a piece. Do you believe that you are powerful, can do what you want, and say what you want because of your title? You can hire people, you can fire people, you can appoint people to city boards now that they have pay. You can give free tickets to bankers, and you can treat people to a free lunch at other sports. Well, I don't have a city job, I don't have any paid board position, and I certainly can buy my own lunch. In other words, you cannot control me. My only loyalty is to the citizens of Hammond, especially those of the 2nd District. I am going to do my job, which is to question the finances of the city, past ordinances and so forth. I know you will continue to intimidate me, but I know I can take it, and only weapon I have are the facts. My only power is my home, and to make it effective, I know I have to elicit four of my candidates to support it, since I have nothing to give. My only power is my integrity and my honor, which are not negotiable. I am more afraid of casting the friendly ghost, Honorable Mayor, than I am you. That is my response to this letter, and I wish he was here. Sorry, I couldn't hurt him personally, but I'm sure he'd read some minutes.
Madam President.
Councilman Higgs.
The only thing that you missed, we're not candidates, we're your colleagues, Councilman.
That's what I said.
You said candidates.
I meant colleagues.
Any other communication? Any other communications? Any other communications? Communications are closed. Moving on to committee reports. There being that there are none, at this time, I would like to read, as soon as I can find it, the upcoming community and crime watch meetings. Thursday, November 17, the Hassville Crime Watch will meet at 7:00 PM at the Gene Shepherd Center. On Wednesday, November 16, the Lafayette Neighborhood Watch will meet at 6:30 PM at Lafayette School. Also on Thursday, November 17, the South Hammond Crime Watch will meet at 7:00 PM at the Hammond Housing Authority Building. And that is how change happens, one person, one gesture, one moment at a time.
Madam Chairman.
Councilman Torres.
Yes, the engineer passed around.
Excuse me, we're under committee reports.
This is a committee report on the streets now.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. The engineer passed around the street, he wants projections for the year 2017. The streets need to be overlaid and obstructed, the street lighting, and so forth, so they would appreciate Councilman giving it to them as soon as they can. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other committee reports? Committee reports are closed. Ordinances during final passage, there are none. Introduction of ordinances.
Item A. Ordinance 16-32, sponsored by Councilman Vanez and Councilman Spitali. And ordinance fixing the salaries for elected city officials for the City of Hammond, Indiana, commencing January 1, 2017, be it ordained by the common council of the City of Hammond, Indiana.
Madam President.
Councilman Spitali.
Through first and second reading, and refer to the Finance Committee.
Do I have a second? Motion by Councilman Spitali, second by Councilman Rakels, to refer 1632 to the Finance Committee on first and second reading. Any discussion? Any discussion? Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Alrighty, 1632 is granted first and second reading.
Item B, ordinance 16-33, sponsored by Councilman Spitali. An ordinance to appropriate funds within the Hammond Police Department grant fund for 2016.
Madam President.
Councilman Spitali.
Move through first and second reading, refer to the Finance Committee, and also the Police and Fire Committee.
Second.
Was a public hearing set for December 12, 2016.
Second.
Motion by Councilman Spitali, second by Councilman Warpo, for first and second reading of 1633, referred to Finance and public hearing. Is there any discussion?
Madam President.
Councilman Spitali.
Is Lieutenant Bicari still here? He left.
Councilman Higgs.
I'd like to be added as a sponsor of the ordinance 1633.
Any discussion? Any discussion? Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Alrighty, 1633 is referred to Finance and Police and Fire, with a public hearing on December 14, December 12, I'm sorry. That is on first and second reading. Moving on.
Item C, ordinance 16-34, sponsored by Councilman Emerson. An ordinance, amending ordinance numbers 7685, 8200, 8564, 8630, 8645, 8718, 8754, 8755, 8854, 8930, 9017, 9061, 9194, and 9252, also known as Section 36.005B, like in boy, four of the Hammond Municipal Hall, as it pertains to approved uses, the 30% to be used for neighborhood.
Madam President.
Councilman Emerson.
First and second reading, refer to the Finance Committee, I so move.
Second.
Motion by Councilman Emerson, second by Councilman Spitali, for first and second reading of 1634 and refer to Finance. Any discussion?
Madam President.
Councilman Higgs.
Can I have my colleague, Councilman Emerson, from the 4th District, explain to me what the purpose of this ordinance is?
Madam President.
Councilman Emerson.
Absolutely, Councilman. This is a use of 30% of the gaming funds to actually offset any residents that may be affected by projects of the Westlake Corridor, in my specific case for the 4th District, the Lindner Retention Pond Project. It is a Homestead Act, a Homestead Act deal, and by that I mean, you cannot be used for landlords, and it cannot be used for businesses or renters. In other words, if you own the home, and you're being replaced, and you buy a home in Hammond, that's key, then those funds will be used for that, and that only.
Madam President.
Councilman Higgs.
So you're saying that people that are going to be displaced, in terms of if they have to relocate from where they currently live, and they have to be homeowners?
Madam President.
Councilman Emerson.
Basically, yes, but the only people that qualify would be homeowners that then buy a home in Hammond. Anything else does not apply.
Any other discussion? Any other discussion? Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? 1634 is referred to Finance on first and second reading.
President Vanez, that concludes the introduction of ordinances.
Thank you, Clerk Golick. Moving on to resolutions.
Item A, Resolution 16R28, sponsored by Councilman Rakels. A resolution authorizing the Hammond Fire Department to apply for assistance to firefighter grant.
Madam Chairperson.
Councilman Rakels.
Make a motion, we pass 16R28.
Second.
Motion by Councilman Rakels, second by Councilman Higgs, for passage of 16R28. Any discussion?
Madam Chairperson.
Yes, Councilman Rakels.
This is used to buy 95 new self-contained breathing apparatus for the firefighters. These need to be re- recycle, not recycled, but they need new ones periodically. This is a grant from FEMA that covers 90% of the cost. We have to have a resolution in order to apply for the grant.
Any discussion?
Madam President.
Councilman Higgs.
The cost is $694,236,236. $694,236, which the savings of the city would have to pay is $71,137.
Any other discussion?
Madam Chairwoman.
Councilman Markovich.
So we're buying 95 new ones, what's the unit cost per unit? We're replacing all the Scott Air Packs that we have here in the Fire Department with new ones? The other ones are no good anymore? Or are firemen using Scott Air Packs now that are unsafe for them to use?
Madam Chairperson.
Councilman Rakels.
They haven't used Scott Air Packs in years. They're replacing the SCBA's that need to be replaced, I don't think it's every one of them, a certain amount per year. They need to apply for this grant to pay for them.
So...
Councilman Markovich.
You're saying, what's going to happen with the old ones? We getting trade-ins on them? Are they going to be resold? Are we going to recoup anything back from the old ones?
I would assume that they, they're not going to keep the old ones if they're no longer in use.
Madam President.
Councilman Higgs.
The ordinance says 95, self-contained breathing apparatus. So it's 95 of them they're purchasing. Now, how many of them they're going to destroy or get away, that's questionable, but according to the ordinance, it says 95.
Any other discussion? Any other discussion? Any other discussion? Clerk Golick, roll call votes, please.
Markovich.
Yes.
Spitali.
Yes.
Calwinski.
Yes.
Torres.
Yes.
Higgs.
Yes.
Emerson.
Yes.
Warpo.
Yes.
Rakels.
Yes.
Vanez.
Yes. Resolution 16R28 passes, nine in favor, zero opposed.
Item B, Resolution 16R30, sponsored by Councilman Rakels. A resolution authorizing the Hammond Fire Department to apply for assistance to firefighter grant for MDTs.
Madam Chairperson.
Councilman Rakels.
Make a motion to pass 16R30.
Second.
Motion by Councilman Rakels, second by Councilman Spitali, for final passage of 16R30. Any discussion?
Thirty.
Thirty.
It's Miss Mark.
Any discussion?
Madam Chairperson.
Yes, Councilman Rakels.
This is so the Hammond Fire Department can modernize its analysis and fire vehicles with the addition of mobile data terminals, similar to those found in the Police Department. Whereas currently, a regional 2016 assistance to firefighters regional grant is available from federal emergency management agency FEMA, which allows regional participation of Lake County Fire Agencies. And the regional grant, if awarded, to all Lake County Fire Departments would cover $30,000 of the cost of the MDTs for Hammond vehicles, would be Hammond's share of the grant.
Okay, any discussion? Any further discussion? Who seconded that, by the way? Councilman Higgs?
I have Councilman Spitali as the second.
Okay. Okay. Alrighty, Clerk Golick, roll call votes, please.
Markovich.
Yes.
Spitali.
Yes.
Calwinski.
Yes.
Torres.
Yes.
Higgs.
Yes.
Emerson.
Yes.
Warpo.
Yes.
Rakels.
Yes.
Vanez.
Yes. 16R30 passes, nine in favor, zero opposed.
Item C, Resolution 16R-29, sponsored by Councilman Warpo. A resolution in support of the donation of surplus historic city property for purposes of historic preservation.
Madam Chairwoman.
Councilman Warpo.
I make a motion that we pass Resolution 16R29.
Second.
Motion by Councilman Warpo, second by Councilman Higgs, for final passage of 16R29. Any discussion?
Madam Chairwoman.
Councilman Warpo.
This is the train that sits across the street from the Hammond Civic Center, and it was given to the City of Hammond in 1955 from someone in New York. It sat out there, there's been several, talk of several attempts to restore the train, whatever, that have fallen through, but we're doing some improvements at the Civic Center now, and a company, the Fort Wayne, I think it's on here, right, Fort Wayne Railroad Historical Society has offered to come get it, and they will restore it in its entirety, and this is a resolution that basically goes along with the resolution that the Park Board passed last week, authorizing them to come get it. And it would be at no cost to the city or to taxpayers.
Wonderful, thank you. Any other discussion?
Madam President, I'd like to be added as a sponsor of this ordinance, and I think it's really great that they are willing to come and get this train, and do something with it. It's been sitting there for quite some time, and sits in my district, and I know kids have been playing on it, and it's wonderful thing, and I applaud their efforts, Fort Wayne Historical Society, for stepping up and taking a conscientious effort in renovating this train that's been sitting for so many years, just there. So, thank you so much for assisting with this endeavor.
Any other discussion?
Madam Chairwoman.
Councilman Markovich.
Council, is this to make room for the other train that's coming in? Is that what I'm, make room for the other train that's coming there? Madam Chairwoman, I know there was some talk earlier, the plans, as I understand it, is eventually it'll be added as a parking lot, or the part that the train sits on, that will come with the parking lot improvements.
Thank you. Any other discussion? Councilman Torres.
I know there were some local enthusiasts, train enthusiasts, that in the past have tried to try to keep that train there, I just wonder if they know if I can notify anybody.
Madam Chairwoman. Well, being on the park board before I got this appointment, there's been a lot of discussion about this train, and there have been offers to fix it in the past, and restore it, whatever. I have a, I call it an email, but it's actually a communication from when we originally got it to Mayor Anderson, and one of the conditions of it is, it would be kept up, and looking in working condition. To answer your question specifically, there has been efforts in the past, there has been talk that there was going to be some historical work done on it, and it just never materialized.
What was the date of that communication?
The email?
Yes.
March 4, 1955.
Alrighty, so since then, there's not been much done on that. Alrighty, any other discussion? Any other discussion?
Call for the vote.
Any other discussion? Clerk Golick, roll call votes, please.
Markovich.
Yes.
Spitali.
Yes.
Calwinski.
Yes.
Torres.
Yes.
Higgs.
Yes.
Emerson.
Yes.
Warpo.
Yes.
Rakels.
Yes.
Vanez.
Yes. 16R29 passes, nine in favor, zero opposed.
President Vanez, that concludes the reading of the resolution.
Thank you. Moving on to new and unfinished business.
Madam President.
Councilman Higgs.
The Dunkin' Donuts ribbon cutting ceremony will be held November 15, 2016, at 2:30 PM at 7410 Kennedy Avenue, Hammond, Indiana, 46324, for those who are interested in going to the grand opening of the new Dunkin' Donuts.
Thank you. Any other new and unfinished business?
Madam President.
Councilman Spitali.
I make a motion to issue an intent to consideration for November 28 for 16-23.
Second.
Motion by Councilman Spitali, second by Councilman Emerson, to issue an intent to consider an ordinance number 1623, and the date is November 28. Thank you. Any discussion? Any discussion? Any discussion? Clerk Golick, may I have a roll call vote, please?
Markovich.
Yes.
Spitali.
Yes.
Calwinski.
Yes.
Torres.
Yes.
Higgs.
Yes.
Emerson.
Yes.
Warpo.
Yes.
Rakels.
Yes.
Vanez.
Yes. 1623, intent to consider for eleven twenty-eight of two thousand sixteen, passes, nine in favor, zero opposed. Any other new and unfinished business?
Madam President.
Councilman Emerson.
Just like to take a minute to thank everyone that worked on the Veterans Day Parade Saturday here in Hammond. It's our third annual, it was a great day, the weather was great. Councilman Spitali was there, actually Councilman Kalwinski was there, all the colleagues, a lot of the colleagues were there. Councilman Spitali is a veteran and the mayor is a veteran and I am. So thanks to Donna Muta from Parks and the Street Department, police officers and everyone. And the keynote speaker was Mr. Wellman, and he's a World War II vet and is probably in better shape than I am. And I'm not a World War II vet, but he was great. And just thanks to everybody that worked hard on it.
Any other new and unfinished business? Any other new and unfinished business?
Madam President.
At this time, I would like to wish everyone in the City of Hammond, happy Thanksgiving from all of us to all of you. Thank you, Councilman Higgs.
I think we were supposed to be rescheduling the meeting for December, am I correct?
In the December meeting, the December twenty-sixth, probably will be canceled, we'll do that at the next meeting. But we decided, and we discussed this in caucus, that the November twenty-eighth, is that the date, November twenty-eighth meeting, will take place because we have some cleanup ordinances. Any other new and unfinished business? Any other new and unfinished business? Any other new and unfinished business? New and unfinished business is now closed. Public expression. Public expression is now open. This is an opportunity for the public to voice their opinion or their concern. You will have three minutes. If a councilman wishes to respond to you, we will return to the regular order of business and/or you can wait until after the council meeting for a response. Alright, so the first person is Ms. Mary Ellen Slazik.
Hi, Mary Ellen Slazik, I'm five seventeen Moon Street, I've been in Hammond all my life. I witnessed a very disgusting spectacle at the previous meeting. A sitting councilman, a man I'd known about forty years, a respected person, a good person, was belittled by the mayor. And I sure as heck didn't see anybody really stick up for him. And then he brings up the fact that he was belittled again and treated like garbage. That is not called for. Yeah, the mayor's a bully, I'm going to come out and say it, because he's done this to other people too. But to do this to a sitting councilman in public is absolutely disgusting and appalling and yes, I am angry. He Torres was my councilman for years when I lived up in North Hammond. I was up in North Hammond twenty-six years. Been in Hammond all my life, South Hammond, North Hammond, now I'm in Central Hammond and thank God I got a good councilman here too. But I mean, what I witnessed last time, if I would have gone up here and spoke, I probably said something that wouldn't be polite for public. So I held my peace till today and then Mr. Torres, Councilman Torres, had to go ahead and say, hey, this happened. There's no excuse for this. Doesn't anybody have to backbow on this council? Just stick up for fellow councilmen? When the mayor's out of line? Because the mayor was definitely out of line and I'm disgusted.
Wow.
Thank you.
Next speaker, Carlotta Blake King.
Good evening, Council. Carlotta Blake King, ten oh four Highland Street. One of the joys of being retired, that I found, is sitting on my sun porch and looking out into Maywood Park, now Martin Luther King Park, at the beautiful trees. And we all remember the big storm that came through our communities and it literally took, ripped up half of the trees in Maywood Park. But I am glad to report, as I look out in my sun porch now, I see the trees being replaced. So I don't know who to thank for that, so I made it my point to try to come to this council meeting, if any of you all had anything to do with that, Councilman Higgs, being the third district councilman, you're responsible for getting those trees, I truly thank you and the Park Department and anybody else that was involved. And secondly, after perusing over this agenda here, I see item B, appropriation, police department, eighty-five thousand dollars, so forth and so on. And then I'm looking at this pedestrian safety revenue fund. Now I hope we're not going back to twenty fourteen, when these funds were used to cite our middle and high school students for jaywalking. We've hopefully gone beyond that as adults. We've learned from that, I understand now you have a police, Hammond Police Commission or whatever you want to call it, to police these things. So I'm just praying that we don't go back to targeting our middle and high school students who are primarily minorities. I mean, now that we got Trump, I'm praying that the Trumpish mentality does not continue to seep into the politics in Hammond, Indiana.
Thank you. Final speaker of the evening, George Stoya.
George Stoya, Robert Stell. I don't know where to start. As I understand it, and God forbid, Mayor Tom does not need me to defend it, everybody knows that. What I'm concerned about and disturbs me about this conflict, I guess, between Councilman Torres and the mayor is, as I understand it, a couple of people came to the councilman with claims, allegations, and from what I understand, he just accepted them as true. I find that disturbing. And I was hoping you would do some research and get some facts to support these claims and thereby then conduct perhaps some inquiries, some maybe investigation, whatever the case may be, because all we have then is just mudslinging. And I know the letter may have hurt you and I'm not going to address that because I'm not privy to that letter, I'm not privy to the entirety of the situation. But what I am privy to is, I did not get the sense you investigated these claims, you just simply accepted it, like three guys came up to you, hey, you're my councilman, let me tell you what I believe. And it's like just believing it so doesn't make it so. Because they interpret something in a certain way and maybe they don't understand the lay of the land, things appear to be, I don't know, maybe he's exercising too much power or whatever the case may be. I mean, he is close with a certain amount of authority. So anyway, that's just, I just, I mentioned this before in public, on the radio, and so I thought I'd do it, you know, to your face. And I just, you know, I mean, this thing's just spinning and I think there's a lot of bad blood being, the potential for bad blood unnecessarily, you know, whose ox is going to get gored here? Anyway, secondly, with respect to this agenda, I don't know if it was intentional, I'm hoping it was an oversight, but item nine C, and most of this stuff is so poorly worded, amending various ordinances known as Section thirty-six oh oh five Municipal Code, as it pertains to approve uses of the thirty percent to be used for neighborhoods. No offense, but what the hell does that mean? I mean, that is absolutely poor. And I get the feeling it's some bad faith. This is not the first time, we've got things that are so abstract, so generic, that people living at home, I mean, we've got Ray here, we've got Jake in the back, they're telecasting these things, and the people are sitting at home going, huh? What was that? We can't make out, I can't make out, I'm here. And there's no discussion. I mean, once in a while, somebody will ask, one councilman will ask another, please elaborate on what this may mean, and that's wonderful. But I mean, this here is, I'm sorry, I find it unacceptable, I, it makes me really suspicious. I'm not saying anything nefarious is going on, but you know, after Councilman, Mr. Golick reads it and, you know, goes through the litany of various ordinances that are affected by it, you know, that's fine, I mean, the citation of Section thirty-six is good, but I don't know, this has got to stop. This has been a perennial practice here with these agendas. Thank you.
Madam President.
Public expression is now closed. Councilman Higgs.
I like a motion to go back to new and unfinished business, I so moved.
Motion by Councilman Higgs.
Second.
Second by Councilman Torres to go back to new and unfinished business. Clerk Golick, may I have a roll call vote, please?
Markovich.
Yes.
Spitali.
Yes.
Kalwinski.
Yes.
Torres.
Yes.
Higgs.
Yes.
Emerson.
Yes.
Warpo.
Yes.
Rakos.
No.
Venez.
Yes. So we go back to the regular order of business, new and unfinished business, eight in favor, one opposed. Councilman Higgs.
Just to elaborate on something that you said, George, in regards to ordinances, that's why I find it very important that when the audience is here as well as it being televised, that it's explained as clearly as possible. Usually, when I, when I say I, me, Councilman Higgs, sponsor ordinance, I try to make it as clear as possible and explain it as well to the audience as well as whoever's watching televised. But certainly, I understand your thoughts, but I don't think it's intentional, it's just that those other ordinances are being affected by it and it's already in the books, so they add that with it to clear, if that helps you. But anyway, I mean, I understand your thoughts, but you know, all I can say is that hopefully the councilman will take the time to explain their ordinance, that's the only thing I can tell you, basically.
Madam Chairman.
Councilman Torres.
In response to you, George, you already became an officer in seventy-seven and then I retired in two thousand. And even before I came on, there was always, let him or Ralph, we always call it in the department, between the rank and file and usually the brass, there's always somebody that's not satisfied with the raises, working conditions or something. So officers are taught, I mean, we're low-end rank officers and they're not satisfied with the way the conditions are. And it was before that, before I came on, it was during that, I was both rank and file, corporal, I mean, professional officer, then first patrolman, then corporal and sergeant and captain. And you used to hear about a time, especially when I was captain, about, I'm not getting promotions because this guy is more campaigning or politics than I am and so forth. So that has always been the case, at least in the police department. I understand, nothing has changed. So people, officers were just expressing their views and I'm just expressing what I heard.
Hey, hit the gavel, hit the gavel.
I'll just tell them that you asked for the meeting.
Madam President. I'll just say this and so that all minds and hearts are clear, we are all grown adults and every one of us should be cheat each other with the utmost respect. We may not always agree, but you can agree to disagree. And we were all elected to represent the taxpayers of this great city. So let's treat each other with the utmost respect. That's all I have to say.
Madam Chairman, one more point. Okay, and what got me upset was not political rhetoric, but the mayor did right that, let me just say, if it's true that Councilman Torres was approached by employees, such things, which I doubt, they were clearly trying to do a rookie councilman into floating any other by his motion, there were costs, an extra three million dollars here. In other words, he's saying I'm lying or that I'm making this up. I'll show you later. But that's my point. I'm sixty-eight years old, only thing I have to offer is my honor and integrity. I don't make things up like I imagine every kid.
Madam President.
One moment, please. I would like to say that people come before us with their opinions and concerns and a lot of times don't have the facts behind it and try to make our city look bad. We did have discussions in caucus tonight, now we've had a discussion about this and I think it's best that these conversations continue after the council meeting. So.
Madam President.
Councilman Higgs.
I make a motion that we adjourn from this meeting.
Second.
Motion by Councilman Higgs, second by Councilman Rakos to adjourn the meeting. Everyone have a wonderful Thanksgiving.